Time to get some in bar.
With the board being present, we'll call this meeting to order, beginning with the hearing for the tax levy. So if there's anyone who has comments.
Anybody that has comments on the 275 tax levy? Well, I anticipated that no one would have comments, so. Board members have a few pages of history on taxes. It's super interesting. But in lieu of sitting here for 10 minutes, we can look over some of that. I got a lot of education over the last couple of weeks figuring the tax rate. I assumed that, you know, I've sat through a lot of these meetings and it's always 275 and that's the minimum and it doesn't change. And I incorrectly assumed that that was just, you just kind of put that in a box and it went on your way. But there's actually a lot to it and a lot of formulas and math that I hadn't done for a while. So that was, that was good education. But just looking at a little bit of, and 275 is where we're at and not, not any change. But you've got a history of reassessment and tax rate. You've got a timeline there of some things that have happened with our, our taxes and our funding and how we receive that funding. 1982 Cardinals won the World Series and Proposition C was established. That was a 1% sales tax for education with one half of proceeds to be used to reduce the operating tax rate. Prop C was an initiative petition sponsored by MSDA and then three years later in 1985, they expanded a lot on Prop C. And they approved constitutional amendments sponsored by the legislator. And you can see how it kind of breaks it down there. Personal property assessed at 33 and a third percent of value. Residential real estate property, 19%, commercial property at 32%, agriculture property at 12% and on. But it basically kind of slid everything out into different denominators. So that's kind of where the, the math comes in to some of that. Over on the back page, through the 90s, there were some, some changes in the late 1990s. You'll see voter approved constitutional amendments. The A bullet raised operating tax rate. School districts authorized to levy without voter approval from 125 to 275. And there are districts in the state that can bump up to 275 without their voters approving that. So we are at 275, but that's a voter approved 275. But there are districts that, that aren't there yet, but that's the, that's the minimum that the, the state has set. And you'll see on B, on the late 90s, allowed school districts to approve operating taxes by a simple majority up to $6. So you can imagine, you can dream about what we could do with a $6 tax rate. But then the 2000s, 220, or 2020, there was some, some changes, but nothing, nothing earth shattering there. But you can read that on your, on your downtime if you'd like.
The next page.
When you say simple majority, is that the majority of the people that vote?
Majority of the voters, yeah. So 51%.
Whoever wins, yeah.
Yeah, right. The Consumer Price Index, that's an important number for figuring the tax rate. And as you can see, it's gone sky high. We're up to 7% in December, the month ending December 2021. So that's a, that's a big number. And that, as with everything else in our world right now, prices have gone up and everything follows suit. You've got a page of some frequently asked questions and answers. This was super helpful to me, so maybe it'll be helpful to you as well. But asking frequent questions like, when is my property reassessed? Is all property taxed? What's the market value and assessed value? How can I know what to expect to pay in property taxes each year? And they give some examples and you can, can work on your home and see what kind of taxes you're going to pay every year. You know, that's our, that's the number of our constituents look at and see, this is how much I give to the school each year. And that 275 is the, is the base, but in the future, you know, it could be that we look at possibly raising that, but not tonight. And then the final page is the, just the, the numbers that we have. You'll see for our current tax year, and this is with all three counties. We pulled from Texas, Douglas and Howell County. And on the back, you can see kind of how that breaks down by county. Obviously Howell County is the, is the primary, over 86 million from Howell County. And then Douglas County, a little over 4 million, and Texas County just right under 5 million. So those are the numbers. And then the breaks it down by the tax year gives us a total of 95, 656, 702. So that's kind of the breakdown for you. Still have three minutes left of our tax hearing if anybody wants to comment after that dissertation.
Did you hear how many schools are still at 275?
Um, I don't know exactly, but it's, it's just a handful. But there are several in this area.
Yeah.
There are a few in the SCA that are at 275, yeah.
I appreciate you doing that. That's good information. Talked about it a lot, but it hasn't been really broken down that well, so thank you.
Yep, no problem. It was an educational experience for me, for sure.
You don't know who it is in the SCA, Mark?
Not the OVA, so it's, and Houston. I'm not sure.
Do you want an extra copy?
Sure.
Will this page like the email password?
Is that working?
Well, I'll have to remember that password because it's getting carried too long. Does that make sense? I'm going to have to change it. Because I hope you knew. Sorry.
The lady's walking out.
We feel your bad advice.
Uh, yes.
Especially when you made us change it.
It's secure though. We've been secure.
Every three months, we would have to come up with another schedule.
That's pretty bad.
The kind of business when you have 25, you know, for like this account, that account.
Good seeing Mr. Gunn. Happy birthday in the last minute of the tax year.
No, it's all right.
Oh, it's, yes. Probably had a birthday recently.
Yeah, he's the senior.
He's a senior.
Yeah. A year away.
A year away.
Right here, we're one.
Didn't want to go over.
I think we're one head away. Yeah, things might turn, you know, pretty quick, yes. All right, it being 6 o'clock, we'll proceed with the agenda. In your pocket, you have a copy of the, of the agenda, a copy of the minutes, financial statement. Any changes to the consent agenda?
We have one change. We need to move the substitute approval to executive session.
All right, with that change, a motion being ordered to receive the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, and moving on to administrative reports. We've got a whole new set of places over here. Look out. Thrilled to have you.
I might take just a minute to introduce our, our three new, three new principals. We have six principals at the school. All six are in new positions this year, so that's an exciting opportunity for us. We, all administrators met today at Echo Bluff and went over some vision for the year and some expectations and what we want to do with that opportunity. So it was a really good day from my vantage point. I think we got a lot accomplished. And I've got a lot of trust in these guys to, to do a good job in the coming years. So we've got Mr. Nick Schmidt for the high school, Chris Rogers for the elementary, and Mr. John Johnson for the middle school. And they're just going to bring you a little snapshot tonight. No numbers or anything like that yet, but just a quick update on, on each of their boards.
Chris, we'll start with you tonight.
I'll go first. Well, we're anxious to get going. Today was the first day in probably two or three weeks that teachers were out in the building because they've been waxing the halls. Stories have done a great job. They got our, they finished up our cafeteria slash gym this week. So we're good to go and ready to start to work. So I expect there'll be a lot of teachers, a lot of activity up there the next couple of weeks, getting classrooms ready and, and so on. So, so it's getting ready to get busy. We're pumped. We're thrilled. There's a lot of changes in our building, so we're excited about that. We're confident it's all going to be a, it's going to be a great year, exciting year, and, and looking forward to it.
All right, thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, so at the middle school, we have the heat and air that's been taking place, been a major project there. I don't know if any of you guys have had a chance to, to walk through the halls, but I mean, it was, it was major. And a lot more intense than, than you and I anticipated. So that's been going on all summer, which has kept the teachers out. Thankfully, they were able to get back here today. There's still a lot more work to be done there. But they do have the system kicked on and it is functioning at least at, at all three levels in the middle school there. So, so that's a good thing. I'm excited for the new school year and the challenges that's going to bring. So I'm excited to be a part of it.
Are they still on track?
Yep, really.
They are.
Kids will be able to go to the middle school. That was our panic and nightmare, but I think we're good.
Well, it could be worse. I remember when we had lots of renovation going there over the years. And I remember while I was teaching, we had tuck pointing going on just outside my window where they were drilling or hammering the, the old mortar out of the bricks. And so it had to have, the windows all completely covered because the whole place filled with dust. And that was while school was going on.
Things are good. We've got a little bit of the heat and air that they're finishing up in our building as well. For the most part, we're in good shape. They're wrapping up construction on our new entryway. Hopefully it'll all be done except for the, the big double doors that they, they're not quite in yet, but should be here sometime soon. We, eight of us went to Making Schools Work Conference in Grapevine, Texas at the end of July. And we got a lot of good, good information there. One of the things that, that I brought back was some information on retaining teachers, a, a program to kind of help them and support them throughout the year. We do a lot of new teacher training, which starts tomorrow with our new teachers. But this is something to kind of help them throughout the year. I've asked Mr. Gunn to come to our first meeting and another one down the line as well. But the idea is they need help and to give them as much support as we can so they will stay in the teaching profession and, and stay in our district. So we're going to implement that. I originally had planned to do that with my high school teachers, but as, as I've talked with these guys, I think we're going to combine that and, and do it for, for all of our new teachers. I think that'll be something that's good. But I did see some teachers in the building today after we got back from our retreat. They were excited and looking forward to getting kids back in the building.
Thank you. Our lady, I guess you'll be presenting.
I will.
Few minutes, so we'll, we'll see.
Well, and I don't have a big update on the special ed world either. We have a lot of new staff coming in and I've, I know I've visited with some of you and you know that Mrs. Altermapp, my process coordinator, and I had a very powerful opportunity, an invitation to visit Washington DC this summer for the Special Ed Legislative Summit. And the purpose of that conference was, we were taught how to be advocates for some specific topics which the Council of Exceptional Children chose three of the hot items, which was IDA fully, IDA fully funded. And just a little background on that, I know the special ed world has never been fully funded. Whenever IDA, IDA was put in place in the 70s, fully funded was expected to be around 40%. And the highest it's ever been is 18%. So that was one of the topics that we were able to advocate for. And then the other two were mental health services and then teacher recruitment retention. But we, we had some powerful training sessions from White House staffers for two or three days. And then we had the opportunity to actually go visit our state, our US representatives and legislators in their offices and present to them our information. So we had a wonderful, wonderful PD experience this summer. And, you know, one of, one of our initiatives were, was actually passed. It wasn't at the amount we had requested, around $3 billion for mental health services for the United States. And it was funded at 1.3 billion, but, you know, it was a great start that came out of that, so.
Well, good, yeah. It's good to hear positive reports from there. Guess we'll move on here. Any other, do you have anything else?
No, just mention that in October, our assistant principals will come and bring the building reports. You'll have a chance to, to visit with them as well.
All right, then move on to our board superintendent relations session. Feedback on that?
Yeah, we had Jerry Lee come and provide that service for us. And that was a, a good session, I think, for, for you guys. And that's certainly helpful to me. And he reached out and asked that we kind of revisit that in our next board meeting to kind of make sure that we remember what we talked about there and just reflect on some of the items that we went over. So this, if you'll remember, was from that July 25th meeting. How do you want your governance team to be perceived? You guys came up with receptive to public input, approachable, transparent, effective, forward-looking, reflective of community values, and responsible. And then the discussion takeaway is what stood out, communication protocols, superintendent evaluation process, the need for some strategic planning, getting the community engaged, and good reminder of board and superintendent roles. So this doesn't have to be a long item, but he did ask that, that there was any conversation you guys wanted to have in, in an open session on that. But this would be a good time to do that.
About those items there?
About those items or any, anything you took away from that meeting?
What about the evaluation? Did he come up with any, anything else on the evaluation?
He's, he's working on sending me some stuff. I haven't seen it yet. But yeah, that's definitely a takeaway. It's something that we want to, we want to get from that.
So I'll just, the first three there, you know, receptive to public input, approachable and transparent. You know, I think we need to figure out a way to where we're out there for the public. You know, obviously we had a tax levy meeting and no one from the public showed up. So, you know, we got to figure out what that looks like. And I realize that we can't really group up and go out as a quorum as easily. But, you know, maybe, you know, we, I don't know, break off in groups of two and three. And I don't know if it's at, you know, a parent teacher conference night or something like that, just board members available to speak to. Or if it's food and sports day or something, you know, to where we're, where we can be receptive to public input and approachable and transparent about what's going on up here. I think we need to figure out a way to try to cross that bridge without getting into too much of.
Staying, staying in the right lane, yeah.
Where we're staying in the right lane as well. So I don't, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think that's something we need to try to figure out as a board.
Yeah, and that community engagement piece, I know that's a part of MSOP 6 and some things we're going to be talking about down the road anyway. So that, those are definitely conversations we, we need to have. And once school gets going, we'll have some of those opportunities to take advantage of.
So this is going to be something that we'll probably see on a somewhat regular basis.
It should be ongoing, yeah.
We'll get it ironed out.
Yep.
And those first three things you mentioned all would have to do with a couple of those down at the bottom there. The need for strategic planning, input from the public, you know, systematically, and then getting the community engaged. All of those would be connected there. So finding appropriate ways to do that, I think, and you made a couple of good suggestions there.
You paid 6 and 1.
There you go, yeah.
Well, to Matt's point, this is something we need to keep, you know, it's good that we're looking at it now, but it'll need to come up at multiple board meetings. It's something we need to keep on the, the top burner.
You know, it probably would have looked good for us two in each building on opening night or where we call it.
Open house.
Open house.
Open house, sure.
I would.
And those are, those are events we can definitely plug you guys in at. We just need to let, just let our principals know.
I mean, I'm going to be there anyway.
Sure, yeah. So there you go. There's your community.
But you're not very approachable, Matt.
Yeah, I don't know. There's a lot to discuss. I think it's just important that we actually figure out a target.
And that's something, could you guys remind us when open house is?
Thursday.
18.
18, 18. Kindergarten's the 16th.
Coming soon.
Yep. Okay, moving on, YMCA partnership with the school. Matt and Adam, Matt with Chad, right?
Yep, Derek and Josh were here that day.
Do you guys have any, have a report or anything?
It went real well. Got in a little more details. Pretty much what, I mean, pretty much what we discussed was, Chad too chiming in here. About 1.24 acres.
You can't say it, it's up there.
I've got it. There's a cop here if you got it. You got some of that cord, but it's right.
Just point it up on that map up there, Chad, if you would.
It's right here.
Oh, yeah.
And what we discussed, City was there, Kim and Bev was there too. One thing we did discuss, that property, that space is, was it a ten street? That would have to stay residential or residential. You know, where it fits a, that would have to stay residential. Talked about their land across the street, this blow quell run, flood plains and all that. We didn't really, how would you discuss that? We, we talked about trading land, not trading land. We talked about this five-year deal. Was kind of thrown out there that we would give YMCA if the board proves it, a five-year, would you call it a contract? How would we, we never did specify.
I don't think we quite got that far in this, you know, the discussion. We were trying to nail down exactly what they needed and what we needed. And I feel, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam or Chad there, but I, I think what we, what we got down to was that they, they needed something from us to say that they, that we're going to, that we want to partner with.
The land's available.
And it was just on that 1.24.
Right.
Nothing else, nothing crossroad, nothing just on.
We really didn't establish a timeline for them to get the building built or what we, you know, if there was going to be a trade on land or anything. We didn't get into any of the nuts and bolts of that. We discussed it some, but more or less we, they, they needed something, you know, some sort of.
Just an agreement that the land is there for us to use. Because, I mean, there's grants there, but I can't, I mean, I'll even take like the Arpa grant. I'll talk to them, but I can't even apply for that unless I know for sure.
Right, that's why we kind of mentioned that. Five years with the yearly update and nothing happened in five years, then it was out.
So that, that kind of lifted back into Marty's court. If, if we move forward and, and the board agrees on, on partnering with the YMCA, then, then Marty would begin the process of kind of going through legal aspects and, and looking what that contract would look like. And then probably working with Chad and sorting out those, those details as well. So I think basically what we're looking for tonight is, would be, you know, some, some sort of.
City was behind us 100%. They, they're all for, for all this. They, I mean, good feedback all the way around.
The only thing on our property is, you know, Bev talked about maybe changing that road coming in. It may affect a little bit of that piece down there.
If, if we got into the, to the weeds of talking about, you know, that, that 1.25 acres or 2, 3 acres.
Yeah.
Versus that, you know, are we discussing a, a straight across trade? Is that what we're looking at? What's, do you get a feel from your board or?
We've got a board meeting the 25th. I think that's Thursday. And, you know, it's something I can take to them. My only fear is going to, the only thing I have about the whole thing is if Montgomery's go ahead and develop that piece out there where we play soccer is, I may have to move my soccer program. I got to move, I'll have to move it somewhere now that we inherited soccer. You know, to some extent to something.
Right.
But yeah, I mean.
I think, I think we'd need to know what, what we were discussing as far as before we could figure out on the contract side of things what the trade would be.
But none of that happens tonight, right?
No.
But I think what we're after tonight is we go ahead and give them, if we go that way, it's true that the school will.
Partner with them to develop a plan.
Do you want to hear the motion?
Yeah.
The motion would be to seek out, for, to allow the YMCA to seek opportunities for construction of a new building on the school, on the lot, Pop Forestry.
Right, so there would be no transfer of ownership on the, on the property itself?
No.
Just basically giving them the green light.
Would that satisfy?
I, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that would satisfy. And that, you know, I mean, we can, yeah, I mean, I can't speak for my board completely, kind of like, you know, you guys. But yeah, I don't see much of an issue. I would just have to take it to my board and we'd have to, like I said, I got a board meeting the 25th.
You mentioned, you're talking about our 1.24, right?
Yes, yes.
That's what.
That's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah, we're not transferring the property. We're beginning the process of putting together that.
Yeah, when their plan comes together, they can use it.
Yeah. Because it's, I mean.
Is that seem correct?
Yeah, yeah, that seems exactly correct. Because, you know, I'll have to apply for some grants and do some, start doing some other stuff. But yeah, I mean, I feel like it's, what, we can't grow as, at the Y right now where we're at. We can't, you know, I'd love to offer child care, food programs and all kinds of stuff, but with the building we're at, we can't, I can't grow anywhere.
Part of the reason, while we're talking five, Chad was saying how they get things secure, things going, it could be up to five years.
Yeah, or possibly, yeah, we even mentioned that eight, eight years was. Yeah, I mean.
It's not going to be built tomorrow.
Right, yeah. It's a, it's a process. I mean, I'm going to form a committee in Willow that's going to kind of help over, you know, we're going to, we're going to have a, I got another local board meeting down here and we're going to form a committee. And some of you guys want to be on it. I'd love for you guys to be on it and you know what's exactly going on.
So we're just agreeing, so we're clear, I guess, that we're open to the opportunity, correct?
I, I think so. I think it might be a little more than that, Jeff. I mean, we're, we're, we're basically telling them that we want to partner with them. We just haven't worked out what the deal would be.
And that we're, we're, we are agreeing though that construction could occur on our property.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, that's what, that's the.
But there's no change in property.
But we still retain ownership.
It's unlikely that construction will occur in the near future.
Right.
I don't see it happening the next year. I mean, I would love to, the money show up right quick, but.
But you need that commitment though in order to pursue.
Yeah, pursue any grants, nobody's going to give me any grant money and to build a building and I have nowhere to build it.
Does that answer your question Jeff?
Yeah, yeah it does. We just don't know what all the terms of the deal, I guess, per se will be at this point.
Kind of like we did with the Moda building.
Exactly right, we told.
That we would partner.
That we'd partner and we sorted through all kinds of stuff.
And I, regardless of what happens tonight, I still feel like this opportunity for the school district and the community is the direction I think we need to go. Regards to what that is going to happen with that property, it's been vacant for eighteen, eighteen years. And, you know, infrastructure at school is what it is and we're always short gyms and those kind of things. And I think it'd be a huge benefit to the students, the staff and the community, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
And the Y clearly needs.
Yeah, yeah, and for the Y too.
I mean, it'll be a great partnership for all of us, when it's, when it's done, I think it's something we could easily partner with.
Any other discussion, questions? On the Y, all right. And we'll move on to safe return to in-person instruction.
And continuity of services plan for 2020, that's a lengthy, that's a lengthy title.
I was abbreviating it.
Only the government can come up with a title that good. We have to check in on that every once in a while, that's still our same plan for reentry that we had. The last one was approved February fourteenth of 22, so we've not done anything with it since then. Looking at it, there's probably some more things we need to do to it than, than what we're going to do tonight. But there are two things I would like for us to do tonight that I would recommend and I'm talking with Michelle, she agrees completely. The first is, it's, well, they're both, really there's no discussion, the federal mask mandate is not in play anymore. So we need to take out the language that says masks have to be worn on school buses. So we would take all of that language out of the plan. And then we also take any language from the Missouri State High School Activities Association, their requirements for COVID testing and that kind of stuff. That's all gone as well. So we need to take both of those things out, so I would ask that you approve those edits tonight. And then next month in September, there's some more detail that we need to get into probably with this and, and some more editing that needs to be done. But I want to give you guys plenty of time to look at that and maybe give Michelle some more time to, to comb over this and make sure we're doing what we need to do. So I would suggest that we do that in September along with taking a look at our, our COVID leave policy that we had last year. And that's something that we need to, to take a look at as well and see if you guys want to continue that or, or do away with it for the coming years. So both of those items would be in September. Tonight it would just be a removal of the, the mask mandate on buses and any Misha requirements.
So we don't want to have all those kids riding buses with masks on.
Right, right.
All right, any questions for Marty on that? All right, Chris, we're ready for professional development.
Okay, I, I, you, do you all have the PD plan in your packet or did they?
No.
You just shared that.
It's up here.
Oh, you got it up there?
It's online right now.
Okay, it's online, all right, excellent. Our professional development plan is just our basic outline of how we, how we provide professional development to our staff. It outlines what our goals are and, and who serves on our professional development committee. This is, this is something that we do, that we renew yearly. There haven't been very many changes to, to our plan over last year, but for the, but all we need tonight is just approval to renew it for the upcoming school year. So unless you guys have any questions, I don't, I don't think there's anything I really have to, I really need to go over in particular.
Any questions? This is online.
Yes, after you approve it tonight, we'll have it on the school website as well, so.
I'm sure Mark will read that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and this is.
Along with that tax rate information, we read that.
And I will say this is an extension of our comprehensive school improvement plan as well. So any, any of our, any of our written plans that we have is a, is, is an extension of that particular document, so. And did, I misadministrated reports, do you go over back to school or do you want me to talk about that?
Well, we hit it a little bit, but if you'd like to, that'd be good.
Well, I.
Because there were some questions about open house, so just if you want.
Oh, I'm not going to answer those, but.
You don't offer for that.
But I, I would talk about new teacher orientation starts tomorrow and we're going to have it at First Baptist. We, we just needed a venue because Grimes was not available. We're, that starts with just our general orientation at eight o'clock in the morning. And then, and then Wednesday Officer Moore is going to do some intruder training with our new staff on campus. And then Thursday we come back on, come back to First Baptist and we're going to go over, go over some, some of our different programs that we use. For example, like iReady or Cis K-12, our, our student information system. And, and have four hour and a half breakout sessions, pretty much are, are four hour and a half sessions over those, over those programs. And, and then next week we go into our all staff meetings and, and, and other individual building meetings as, as, as needed. And so very, very excited about what's coming up, but, and, and I, I look forward to the, I look forward to the third day of new teacher orientation. This is the first time we've tried this and I've, I've looked at what other schools do and they do like these five day academies. And I think we're, we do a good job of, in a, in a three day period of getting, giving the teachers, or we're going to this year, of giving the teachers things that they need going into day one.
Might also mention we're getting together with the rest of the SCA for a, for a day.
Yes, yes, on the nineteenth, Friday the nineteenth, we're meeting in Mountain Grove. Manny Scott, who, if you've ever watched the movie Freedom, Freedom Riders, he was one of the students portrayed in that movie. He has written several books and goes on and has a speaking tour. The conference has hired him to come and speak to the, to everybody in the SCA on that, that morning. He and then, and that'll be at the arena in Mountain Grove. And then that afternoon, after we have lunch in Mountain Grove, we're going to, we're going to divide up into grade level and content area teams as a conference. And we haven't done this in several years, I think 2012 was the last time we did this. And, and so they're going to have a time to collaborate with teachers from around the conference as well. So I am, I'm very, I'm looking forward to that and I'm hoping this expands back out into what we were doing in, in 2012, where we have a big professional development day with all of the SCA. I would love to have it back here on campus and, but, you know, it may be one of those things where, you know, we, we rotate between, between places as well. But we're centrally located, we posted it before and, and I, I hope that's what we do in the fall of 23.
What's the date of the Mountain Grove?
The nineteenth, it's the Friday before school starts.
It's a great event in the past and kudos to Coach Wagner for spearheading the group to get that going again.
Yeah, and the, and the other directors in, in the conference are doing a great job of putting that together, especially the afternoon piece. And we, we whipped that together over the course of the last four or five months and meeting on a limited basis, but it's coming together quite well, I think. And just one other side note, the day after that on the twentieth is the, my cross country team is doing their annual show news run. If you'd like to join us that morning down at Skillet's in West Plains, they run down there. I have at least two kids who are probably going from the new gym to Skillet's. And, but if you want to join us around eight thirty, nine o'clock that morning, that would, that'd be great. They would love to see you out there, if, if you're not free, no problem, but.
Join you at Skillet's, right?
Just join us at Skillet's, yeah. Matt will probably ride, ride a bike alongside of us, but, but yes, if you want to meet us down there, feel free and we would, we would love to have you.
What time you starting to run?
Uh, we're going to start running, I haven't decided that, probably about five thirty in the morning.
Five thirty, we have water for you, we can show up and run with you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Kenny drives, drives, Kenny Smith drives the bus for us and we drop kids off along the way and he, he provides water. He, it's, it's funny watching him come out, come from the bus with all these bottles of water, used to be cups of water, but all these bottles of water. And he's just speed walking up to the kids, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a fun sight to see. And, and it's really the first chance that the parents get to come out and cheer up, cheer their kids on, even though they're not racing, it's just a train run. But it, once, the closer we get, the more appreciative the kids get that they have somebody watching them and it kind of fuels their fire in the last few miles, especially with the eight to fourteen junction on, it is a grind to finish that run out, so.
The twentieth, is that right?
That's the twentieth, yes, it's Saturday morning.
What time at Skittles?
About eight, I'm hoping about eight thirty, Skillet's, Skillet's. I think, I think my kids would love to have some Skittles, but.
What time are you going to be there, Chris?
I, I'm hoping between eight thirty and nine that morning.
Are you going to show, are you going to be at the, are you going to run with them all the way?
I, probably not, I'm hoping to get about thirteen in myself, but we'll see.
Hopefully get across the parking lot.
That's all I have, so.
All right, thank you, Chris. All right, a special education compliance plan?
All right, I'm glad that we all got a pretty copy of this, we'll start on page one, we'll hopefully get to page one hundred twelve by like four AM. Since I'm a rated word for it.
That's fine.
Not, no, not. Our local compliance plan is a model based off the state plan. Every year we have to adopt our, our compliance plans. It outlines how we meet IDA regulations and requirements in our district. This document covers every aspect of IDA, if you want to read it in your spare time. I will just highlight, there were three major changes from, from last year's plan to this year's plan. And so that's all I'm really going to talk about and if you have other questions, I will be glad to answer this for you. One of the biggest changes to the state, or to the state plan which affected our local compliance plan is there is no longer the speech implementer model. As of May thirtieth, the state of Missouri could no longer use speech implementers. We have, we have staff in place that has taken care of that, we, we addressed that before last year even started, so that didn't really affect us. The next change has to do with on the eligibility area for other health impairment. In the past, the wording had read that the medical diagnosis had to come from a licensed physician, psychological examiner or counselor. And now nurse practitioners or physician assistants can make that diagnosis. And then the third change is addressed under the eligibility area for specific learning disability. We are now required to use specific standard scores and IQ cognitive assessment scores, full scale IQs, based on the testing company's recommendations. If the, we have to use a full scale IQ unless there is a, a compelling and valid, and valid reason according to the test company not to use that IQ. So no longer can you use nonverbal IQs or cognitive proficiency, proficiency indexes or other scores other than a full scale IQ to determine the discrepancy for a specific learning disability. But those are the three major changes.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
There's none, right?
Well, we do appreciate the work that goes into the professional development plan and the compliance plan. I know that there's a lot of work that goes into those and I also know with CSET coming up that those have to be in place and have to be coordinated with, and referred to in the CSET plan. So thank you for your work in putting all that together. Any other questions? Comments from our guests? And we'll move right into items for action. First order of business, a motion being ordered to set the tax rate at two seventy-five per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
Second. Jeff's excited, I'm not sure.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The safe return to instruction and continuity of services plan for the upcoming school year 22, 23. Motion being ordered to approve the safe return to instruction and continuity of services plan with the edits of removing the mask mandate on buses and the Misha requirements.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You said aye. All opposed? All right, a motion being ordered to approve the professional, professional development plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, a motion being ordered to approve the special education compliance plan as presented.
So moved, second.
I get it.
Give it to Jeff.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then a motion being ordered to allow the YMCA to seek opportunities for construction of a new building on the school owned lot off Forest Street.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then we'll move into executive session with, with the motion here. Thought we'd receive a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? Got a roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Now that we're back in open session, I would receive a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?